Good evening, everybody. I'm Adam Cummings, the chairman of tonight's meeting. We call this meeting to order as a legally constituted meeting of the Town of Chi-Li Zoning Board of Appeals. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Board members, everybody's in attendance tonight. Jimmy Wiesner's on my far left, Mark Mary on my immediate left, Fred Trotz on my immediate right, Philip Summelnell's on the far right, Paul Wanzun Reed with the Building Department. Tonight, we have Jared Herr with the Town Council. Sandy Hewlett is our stenographer. We only have one application tonight, so we will hear it in the order as it appears on the agenda. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, the board will discuss and vote on the application. You'll get our letter from the Building Department within a week with what our decision is. I do have to point out, in the event of an emergency, the exits, the entrance you likely came in, that's the exit. The two doors in the back are also exits, and the doors on the sides, those go outside the building. If you do have a cellphone or pager, please turn it off or silence it, just to prevent any interruptions. Thank you in advance for that. Any issues with the sign? I will point out, the sign, as Dorothy and I discussed earlier, the sign wasn't in the best location. It was nailed to the tree that was farther down the driveway, but it took some knowledge to know that it was there. But any other issues or any discussion on the sign? If not, we'll go ahead with the application of Nicholas Fenty-Grossi, 1560 Davis Road, Rochester, New York, 14612, the owner, for variance to erect a 40-foot by 80-foot accessory structure, a barn, with an 80-foot by 12-foot storage area, which will be covered for: A, a total area proposed to be 4,160 square feet, or 1,200 square feet is allowed; B, the height proposed to be 20 feet, 0 inches, where 12 feet is allowed; and C, locate in the front yard where it's not permitted; and D, the housing of livestock 100 feet from the property line, where 200 feet is required at the property located at 1560 Davis Road in the G.I. slash R-1-15 district. It's a unique parcel that's split across two zones and even split across two municipal boundaries. It does go into Raiga, not for the part we're looking at right now, but the whole parcel does. And the improvements he's looking to do is in the zone of the R-1-15. Is that accurate, Paul? Or have I got that backwards? Is the G.I. in the back or the G.I. in the front?
G.I.'s in the back.
Okay.
R's in the front.
Okay, thank you. All right. Yes, go ahead, Fred.
Can you clarify a minute?
So, the parcel itself, the way the zoning districts were drawn up on the zoning map, the parcel was actually split in two. So, the northern part, or the back part, is actually falling within the general industrial zone. The front part, where he's looking to do this, is actually in the residential zone, the R-1-15 district.
So, why wasn't it made when they purchased the house?
What do you mean?
Why didn't they make that all one?
They don't make it. The town board makes the zoning. The town board looked at it and drew a line across where they wanted the industrial, which probably lined up with an industrial parcel, and it splits the parcel.
Okay.
So, if the applicant would like to come to the podium, identify yourself with your name and address, anything else you'd like to add on this? Otherwise, I'll go right into board questions.
My name's Nick Fanta-Grossi, live at 1560 Davis Road. It's our hope to be able to build this barn for our farm. We are a part-time farm. We have cows, horses, pigs, and chickens. I wasn't aware that this was splitting the residential zone. I thought it was a little bit further down. But with that being said, we'd still like to get this easement.
Yep. Variance, just...
Variance, variance.
We're not doing easements tonight.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Variance.
Just clarifying it for the record. Jim, any questions? Do you want to... Actually, it's one application tonight, so we'll just hit them all at once instead of going one at a time.
So, it is a very interesting parcel. So, this has already been subdivided?
Yes. So, we built the house last spring and moved in last August, so we've been there for a year.
So, it was subdivided at that time?
I'm not sure how to answer that. That was up to the engineers. My knowledge is that zoning never changed. It was what it was. There is a line at the, I believe it's the old west shoreline, is where it splits between residential to the south and industrial vacant to the north.
Subdivision and zoning are two different things.
Our formation of that particular parcel, whether it was part of a larger farm?
It was part of a larger parcel.
So, it was subdivided?
Yes.
And then, obviously, that's a flag lot, so there's a shared driveway now for...
We own the driveway. The driveway is... The dimensions are on the map.
It looks like there's another parcel...
And then, the actual property is 42 acres, 10 of which is in Raiga.
So, that I'll explain. So, yes, the overall parcel is 42 acres. There is an easement. He owns... I haven't read the language, but I believe he, as the parent parcel on that, owns it. And as you'll see in the plan, it calls out an ingress, an egress, and a utility easement. That's for the neighboring parcel to also use it as a driveway to get back to their house.
That's correct.
That goes to the El...
It's 1550 Davis, has an easement agreement.
Yeah, Albino...
Yep, Thomas Albano.
Albino. It says Albino Family Trust. I'm just reading it here. I thought it was Albano as well. That's why I was...
It is.
Okay. So, the surveyor's map has it as Albino, but I believe it's Albano with the name.
So, the animals that... You already have animals that you're bringing over, or...
Yes.
So, you have a separate piece of property that you have the farm on currently?
The farm is the back parcel of the property.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Mark?
So, what do you do for those animals today? What type of shelter do they have?
They have run-in shelters. They have what's called a run-in shelter. So, it's a 10-by-20, three-and-a-half-sided shed that they can go into, to get out of the weather.
And you're expanding the number of livestock on the property. Is that the intent?
The intent is, yes, to expand the number of livestock, not by a great amount, but we want to have some areas where we can put some horses in. They need to be out of the pasture, as well as storage for our equipment.
And that's what's driving the footprint of this structure, correct?
Correct. So, if you look at the picture, the picture of the barn, the lean-to area, is going to be the only area for livestock. The rest of the barn is going to be equipment. I do not have any aspiration to be a commercial horse border or anything like that.
Stand closer to the mic, the microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, we're taking these all in at the same time, right?
Right now, we're just throwing questions out at them. We'll have individual decision-making process.
So, you appear, sir, to have a pretty substantial parcel here. And just out of curiosity, the location of the structure, what is driving that location?
The availability of electric and water. If we go beyond the house, running the water... Sorry. Running the water line that comes from the road, as well as the electric from the transformer that's there, would be very, 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 very expensive.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Fred?
So, this is what's driving you to put it in that spot, is the electric and the water?
And proximity to the driveway, I'm assuming?
Proximity to the driveway, as well as utilities.
Because you do have a lot of property there, and it seems to be awfully close. The other question I have for you is, why do you have to have it that high, the 20 feet?
Well, it'd be standard for a pole barn is 12-foot walls, and then the peak of the roof in order to provide the adequate snow load and...
Snow falling off.
Just engineering-wise, why so it falls off?
My pole barn's not 20 feet high.
From the base to the tip of it? How tall are your walls?
Walls are 10 feet.
So, in order to put our tractor that I have in there, 10 foot is not enough?
I'm sorry. I have a 10-foot garage door, so I got 12 foot.
What's the pitch of your roof?
Pardon? What's your width?
Well, I'm within code.
No, what's your width? That's going to drive your height.
Yeah, my width is 30, my length is 40. Your ridge height on top, so 12 is 17 feet.
17, yeah.
Correct. He's 40 feet. So, it'll take 20 to... Now, you're at 80. And the size of the garage, why is it... How much of that of the building is interior garage that is not for the horses or animals?
40 by 80. So, the actual footprint of it is 52 by 80, because of the 12-foot overhang?
Uh-huh. And why do you need that much room for equipment?
If I wanted to put a camping trailer or anything in there, that's what really makes the most sense, as far as cost-wise in our budget. There is a pre-existing structure that has the neighbor's that's right across within maybe 150... So, it's 50 feet from my property line is drawn, and his barn is, I believe, bigger than this one. And it's a pre-existing pole barn. It's... I think it's 50 by 100, but I'm not sure. So, we are going to be the smaller one right there.
Is it a pre-existing, non-conforming?
No, Tom Albano's.
Oh, that's Tom's? Yeah, that's pre-existing, non-conforming.
Right. That was the other driving factor, where we wanted to put the barn, is it would be within the same proximity of his.
How far from Davis Road is this, approximately?
1,500 feet. I don't believe you'll be able to see it from the road with the trees.
What was that question, Adam?
I asked how far off Davis Road it is going to be.
The answer was about 1,500 feet.
All set, Fred, or you got a...
Yeah.
Want me to come back to you?
Yeah.
Phil?
Am I mistaken, or... So, your property line is actually quite a ways back from Davis Road, right? You don't own the front lot, you're on the second lot in?
He does own the front lot. He's got a flag lot, and he owns the parcel that has the flag that touches the front of Davis Road.
Okay.
And then, the neighbor has the egress part. That's why it's a shared driveway, that you see it split.
Gotcha. So, I'm looking at the map, and it says John and Linda Simpson.
That's right along Davis Road, yep.
So, that lot is actually owned by this gentleman. He's the neighbor to the south, and that's what you're seeing in there. So, you're looking at John Simpson's property, and then we're actually behind that.
That's what I asked.
Yes, we're...
So, your property doesn't even touch Davis Road, your back, correct?
The only part of our property that touches Davis Road is where the driveway is.
Correct.
So, I believe it's 60 or 80 feet wide, running all the way back, better part of 1,300 feet.
Okay. So, if I'm reading this correctly, Ordo's own a piece up front on Davis, that fronts on Davis, correct?
Correct.
Simpson's own the property around the Ordo property, and then your back?
Correct.
Okay. If you moved your barn into compliance, how far would it be from your house, say, if you went 200?
So, I understand what you're asking. If we moved it back, I'd be in my leach field, which is in front of my house. So, that's the other...
Gotcha. And you have livestock on the property right now?
Yes.
Okay. What... Could you give me some better idea of numbers and stuff like that?
Sure, yeah. We have five cows, three horses, and then three permanent pigs, and then some assortment of chickens and waterfall.
And you're going to increase all that livestock?
Not by a lot, but yes. This is not my full-time job. I'm a city Rochester firefighter, so this is just a hobby farm.
Okay. So, all those animals, the numbers will increase with all those animals?
Correct.
Some more than others? Is this... So, this is just a hobby? It's going to continue to be a hobby, or...
Yes.
Do you butcher any of these animals?
Currently, just pigs. We actually have an LLC farm. You could look this up. It's called Fanta-Grossi Farms.
And there will be a connection between the livestock here and the livestock on the farm? Would this be an overflow kind of thing, or...
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
I think we covered the square footage question on there. The height, I believe we covered a little detail there, but you said you've got a neighboring, Mr. Albano's barn, is that taller than 20 feet?
I can't say for sure. I believe he has 16-foot walls, but I...
More than likely, it'll be a similar height.
It'll be a similar structure.
But either way, it's greater than 12 feet.
Yes.
And then, your front yard, you mentioned that one is... Right in front of your house is the leach field for your septic system, correct?
To the southwest of it, yes.
Yep. So, if you had moved to the 200 feet instead of the 100 feet, and if you went to the northeast, you've got a pond on your property, correct?
Correct.
So, that would conflict, and I'm guessing the topography goes towards the pond?
Yes, everything kind of goes north downhill into drainage.
And then, my last question on it is, all of the neighbors' houses, are they closer to Davis Road on those... I think we talked about Simpson's property there, Ordo's property, and Albano's. And then, it looks like to the east, somebody else is building a house.
Significantly farther away. They are significantly closer to Davis Road, yes.
Okay. Side table, anything to add?
I don't know. I think you covered it.
Now, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and anyone with a bright pink shirt on, I'd like to hear some questions. I'm just kidding, bud. Any questions? This is Lorgas.
Send bright pink to all of you, please, to see. It's good to be back and see everybody. And some good questions tonight. I'm here today, I looked at the packet that the board should have gotten tonight, and I did have some questions. Number one, I did not see the sign, which I know is a requirement, and I am told it was...
On the trunk of a tree.
They have it where it is, but I have to wonder if all the other neighbors saw it either. With this kind of an application, I expected to be... You would have a crowd in this room.
We don't seem to be popular here. We don't seem to be very popular here. Even on the ones we think people are going to come to, they don't show up.
What I'm concerned about, I guess, in a way, is maybe they didn't see the sign either. Maybe they're not aware. And this is kind of a big change to the neighborhood when you're separating in this kind of livestock and residential area, especially where there's some very nice homes up there. And I would think that they would have more than a few concerns about this, so... I did go on the computer and look up a website. I understand... I don't know if you people had done that, but what I gathered from the pictures on the website was that this was an attraction, that they, you know, come and see the animals, come and pet them. It did not... It said that, but there was a field you got from it, where they had to do the cattle and the wagon and all that. And it almost appeared that it was an attraction to draw people in, to come and... Like a petting zoo, if you will.
Or like a component of Stokie Farms.
A what?
Stokie Farms has something like that.
Yes, yes. And I own a farm. I understand a farm. I mean, 4 acres is really not...
A big farm.
A farm. I mean, when you have a farm, it's kind of a farm, in my opinion. I'm a little concerned, too, about the fact that, number one, they have all this livestock, and evidently, they've never requested this kind of hearing about it. So, they kind of jumped the gun and went ahead with the animals, and then now they're kind of coming in looking for a blessing, so... And it sounds like there's going to be more animals. And a lot of people in town, especially up in Raiga, waitress for where they have horses, but I don't think too many have pigs. Pigs are a very smelly animal, if you've ever had pigs. The odor that they present is pretty rich, so I just don't like the idea of all these animals. Number one, they were brought in without approval, without clearance, without the code being evident, evidently. And now, it looks like it's going to be even... The thought is to go bigger, bigger, bigger. I guess I'd like a kind of an explanation. Is this a business? This, these animals, is this a business? I'm here, no, but on the other end, it's going to get more. It's kind of a time prediction.
It could be. It might not be. I don't know, and I'm trying to focus on the area variances that we have tonight, and the only thing we have related to livestock is its proximity to the property line. I suppose we could check our code and ask New York State Ag and Markets what their thoughts are on sound agricultural... Yes, Paul?
Ag and markets wouldn't take a play in here. It's in our district.
Yep.
However, if you look at 500-62 animals, if he has over 5 acres, he is allowed to have domesticated animals, which include horses, cows, ducks, and sort of follow... I can pretty much have anything he wants. And there is no defined numbers of the number he can have on that, so long as he has over 5 acres. And then, what becomes an issue is the proximity to the property line of the storage of the building, the livestock, which is what he's actually for us tonight. It's a 500-62B5 location of building housing livestock.
No. So, I have to think that none of his neighbors, that we have a problem with this setback?
I have not received... I have not received word opposing it or in favor of it.
Well, we can ask his neighbor right there.
Hello, good evening. I'm Chris. I purchased the Johnsons' property about a year ago. I've dealt with some of the larger here. You know, I'm also being purchased with my property at work. I've met Nick a couple times. You know, he's come by my property and just see the process. His property, I can only see his house in the fall when the leaves drop, but in the summertime, I can't see back there. You know, he's... I've walked back there. I'm aware of the animals he has. The smell does not bother me. They're contained. You know, I've never heard of the animals being out in the open. His property sits quite a ways from Davis Road. You know, I see... I'll see he catches them out, but I've never seen the animals roaming free anywhere on my property, and my property blocks it, is...
So, I'll ask you... I'll word it two different ways. You can answer either question. Are you in favor and in support of the project, or do you have no objections?
I support the project. I believe he's doing this for a cause, to, I mean, support his livestock or whatever he asks, for tools or equipment for storage. You know, we all have garages and stuff, so he's telling you guys, I mean, what is his purpose for using it and why he wants to proceed with this? And he's just trying to ask you guys if you're all in, or...
Okay.
What are your thoughts on it?
Okay.
Well, I'm very concerned that this is more than just a hobby. I'm sorry. This is how these things get out of control. And the only thing I can say is, I stood in this very room when I had heard the subject of just chickens being brought out, and the applicant has been turned down. This is far more serious than a dozen chickens for kids to learn how, or eggs to... This is big time. Bagged house, with an idea to get more, three horses, three pigs that they slaughter, so that's obviously going to be a turnover, maybe more at any given time. And then chickens and waterfalls, aside this question, sort of.
And to be fair, Dorothy, really quick to interject, I do believe that most of the chicken ones we did hear were on much smaller parcels than for...
Oh, I hear. This is probably a wonderful idea, what they're doing, and God bless them, that's what they want, not there. Not there. Not where you've got so many beautiful homes on that road, and they're being built all the time, and everybody does a good job on that road. Everybody takes care of the place. I'm not saying he won't, but this is not the place for this kind of a project.
I do have to... I do see a hand behind you, so if you don't mind, could I have him jump in real quick, and then I'll go back to yours?
Anyway, I would hope that if you decide to go ahead with any of this, that you find a way to put some kind of limit on how many animals you can have on this piece of property.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Gene Easton. Actually, I'm a distant relative of Dorothy, but I don't think that'd be on the point. I am one of the viewers up the road. I own a couple of farms up the road. Been there on Davis Road my whole life. As a matter of fact, when I was a kid, I was running down and down those railroad tracks with field cars and mini trucks and everything else, so I know all of that property really well. My only... I mean, I think it's a great idea. I think it's nice to have some horses back on the street. My farm used to have horses. I have a couple of farms now, and probably have way more impact than what he's doing because he's so far off the road. My only reason that I came tonight is because I've met Nick and seen a lot of horses and stuff, so I don't have a problem at all with what he's doing. My concern was the industrial behind there. Now, that's really my concern, as far as if you want to have impact to Davis Road, get closer with the industry that's obviously all over Indian Street. So, in my eyes, I'd love to see a farm there, as opposed to some company buying up that chunk of property and building something back there that has a really impact on the whole nature of the thing. If you haven't heard and buy it, he sits way back... I'm assuming that it's... Your property line is the old railroad bed, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. So, there's an old railroad bed, and then there's a decent-sized field, and then there's the two neighbors up in front of them. The neighbor in front of them, I'm not sure whether that's you that bought the old house and you own all the old state property? Yes, so he's doing a wonderful job rebuilding the barns and stuff, so there is a big barn sitting between Nick's property and Davis Road. So, it's, to me, would be a very low-impact house. You know, obviously, he doesn't have enough acreage to really run a functioning farm, so I wouldn't be concerned about that. And I think anybody that's been attached with horses and cows know that they're not real economically friendly, let's put it that way. You've spent more money than you're making, that's for sure.
I'll see.
So, I just want to say, I had a feeling that... So I just want, I have a feeling that there was probably going to be not a whole lot of people showing up. And so I just wanted to put it in. I was concerned about the industrial zone area. So I would assume that that would seal that off unless somebody came in from the Riga side, which I guess is still possible. Because I know there's some land back there that's been there forever. Back to the railroad tracks.
I own 10 acres in the Riga, and then the rest of it is John Neary's property, who owns almost to the Antrich.
But that's his own, that's for sure.
So to clarify, I'll jump in because I don't really want the conversation...
I apologize.
Between you two, it's supposed to be with us at the board.
Sorry.
But we aren't in the jurisdiction of changing zoning. That's the town board's jurisdiction of things. As long as he's holding it and not interested in doing it, it's up to his control on what happens on that. But that's good information that I would like to pass along because it is a uniquely zoned parcel.
I can say for the record that I am not in favor of industrial over there. I really wish CNM Forwarding hadn't expanded, but it's none of my business. But as long as I own that 42 acres, it will be green space per se.
And then on Riga, we don't have any control on that. I'm not even sure what is zoned on that.
No, I get that whole, obviously, there's not a lot of industry that's came into that area with the trucking. And we're concerned with that traffic that basically going down Davis Road coming in. Some effects when the road shuts down, guess where they all go down? Never had any thermal trucks going down Davis Road in my lifetime. You know what I mean? Like, we don't know. So it's a little bit different. So just wanted to say that I'm in favor of what he's doing. And I think it would be great for those of you...
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Borges, anything else? Anything further? Oh, okay.
Are you sure, Bud? All right. I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor saying aye.
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 We did talk about chickens. I think it was goats, Himalayan mountain goats, I believe, specifically. We have talked about, same with dogs, we have restricted them on acreage, but never to the size of the parcel we have here. So I just want to leave that up to the board on your discussion on it. I mean, he's allowed to have... Allowed to have them on there.
I really don't see where we can control it.
Right.
That's not the issue.
No, man.
I guess my only question is, are we going to, is this a one? Or are we going to do these one at a time?
No, we're going to do these one at a time.
Okay.
We're going to do them one at a time. But I do want to point out that the square footage does kind of tie in with the height, as was already discussed. Because if you make it wider, that's what's making it 20 feet. You make it narrower, it'll bring the height down.
So what would take it out of the front yard?
Taking it out of the front yard...
Because there's like three front yards here.
So...
Four front yards.
Yes. So it is being measured currently from the front of the flag, not the stem of the flag, the bottom part of the flag. Is that accurate, Paul? Do you, that's how it's drawn.
What was that, Adam? I'm sorry?
I said the 100-foot. We are interpreting that to come from, or you are interpreting that, to come from the front edge or the bottom edge of the flag, not measuring 100 feet from the road frontage.
That's correct.
And that makes a lot of sense.
The front's following my demand.
Yep.
Well, for the pig out of the front yard...
The less, the less is, might be an R in there somewhere.
Yep. So Jim, to answer your question, in order to get it beyond that one, it was, to get it to 200 feet would be pushing it towards the house if it went to the north there, which is where his leach fields are located for his septic system.
What I'm saying is the variant C located in front yard.
Yep.
It has to be behind the house?
It would have to be behind the house, yes. So if it went behind the house to the northeast, he's got a pond, and all the sloping ground goes towards that pond. He could go behind the house. But as you said, to extend the water...
And electric.
Is this, and driveway is...
So that's the next question. Water and electric is at the house right now, isn't it? Yeah, I was going to say, the hardship you're saying is utilities.
Yep.
Where are you going to tap into the utilities? Is that the house? Or do you have to bring them in from the road?
No. The hope's is to tee in the water line that comes off the road. So they asked us to run a two-inch water line. Actually, they asked us to run a one-inch water line, and we increased it to a two-inch water line from the road. And I'd like to tee into it to get into the barn. The other thing was, is because that is an old railroad bed, it is the highest feature. It is the highest topographically. It's all built on stone. I don't have to worry about drainage. I don't have to worry about rot. So we wanted to utilize the fact that that base is already there. To move it back into behind the house, I would have to bring in probably close to 1,000 yards of stone in order to build it up to a point where it's not going to be wet constantly because that whole area is a depression.
The answer is aye? Okay.
Side table, anything to add? Okay. I saw your pocket, so I wasn't sure.
I mean, it does make more sense now since you mentioned about the railroad bed. I can understand that more. I mean, in my opinion, I do have issues with almost everything on there, but with the same respect, you can't really see it from the way that the property is. And how the property is laid out as far as your backyard and stuff like that, you don't have many options.
Well, he does, but there's no cost-effective ones.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Not, I will declare the voting board as lead agency and based on the information...
Should we vote in the public hearing?
Yes. Yeah, we did a vote.
Dimension's kicking in.
As lead agency and based on the information evidence, present this hearing, find this application to be an endless action with no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So now we'll start with letter A. The total area proposed to be 4,160 square feet, where 1,200 square feet is allowed. Ask for a motion to adopt this application. Oh, I do have one condition of approval. You'll have to get a building permit.
Absolutely.
You've already started that process. So I'd ask for that motion to adopt the application with that one condition.
Yes, Paul.
Does the board have any concerns with the, any commercial endeavors, like an agribusiness on the property? Would you want to condition that as well?
I'll admit, I'm conflicted on regulating agribusinesses when we have our own farmland protection plan in the town, even if it's in a residential district.
That's the point right there.
Even though it's in a residential district, I still, in New York State, especially in the counties in this area, we're not Westchester, agricultural is a major priority in this state.
Farms, community...
Correct. What?
It is in the town's highlight as well. We have a farmland protection.
I just wanted to point it out.
But House of Lords in our district, so...
Yes. Just out of curiosity, I didn't do the research on it. What's the zoning in Riga? Have we ever heard back from Riga of what theirs is? Because I'd be curious what theirs is. With ours budding to it, it might give us an opportunity that maybe our GI or our LI and our, no, our GI and our residential zone are budding up to their agricultural zone. We might need to look at that.
We think he's right in that Neary's property to the north is in the GI. All that area from Antrich to Union's GI.
And it's GI because of the railroad? Or the rail spur that could spur off of it? I remember that one.
I do have some concerns. And we all looked this over, right, from Murrell County?
Yep.
Who has jurisdiction over their concerns?
Well, they labeled it at their DRC. So which one specifically? Because most of these are boilerplate.
Well, number two.
Yep. Of which I can find no plan. That western shore, that New York City west shoreline goes all the way to Albany and then down the Hudson to New York City. The trail ended in Churchville, and I have seen nothing out of Genesee Transportation Council or anyone else to have a plan for the foreseeable future to keep extending it.
And our local plan that appears in our, in our plan...
Our 2030?
Yeah.
No.
That would impact that trail?
Nope. So our trail that's planned is along Black Creek, but not along the west shoreline, the old railroad.
Okay. And number four?
Yep.
Who would have...
That would ultimately fall on the DEC. But this one, his stream just happened to be on his 43-acre parcel, not necessarily in the areas being developed.
And I'm just thinking about the impact of livestock on streams.
Yep. So they get permitted separately through what's called the consolidator CAFO. So C-A-F-O, the... Yeah, I forget what the ST stands for, but it's animal, it's concentrated animal feeding operations. And he would then be regulated by them in Ag and Markets to make sure the sound agricultural processes are in there to not pollute the stream. But the town doesn't. Even on the MS4 side, which is the stormwater, the municipal separate storm sewer system permit, we don't get into that. It's all deferred to the DEC to oversee that regulation.
But there are controls in place.
Yeah.
So in other words, a landowner, a 40-acre landowner can't dump 300 head of cattle in there?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep. They would be permitted and regulated by the state. I didn't, I don't know if it's 300 head of cattle. They have their own threshold of it. But even the smaller ones, if they polluted, it's a violation of the Clean Water Act and the environmental conservation law in New York State.
And I wonder where do we stand? And I understand agribusiness, but I also understand, I also have a sense of, there's agribusiness, and then there's what I would say, commercial shoal farming, aka stokie farms or any of those places where, are we concerned about that? Do we, are there any controls in place? And, I mean, I don't want to discourage that. Let's say it becomes a shoal place and they want to bring 300 people weekend into there.
I don't believe we do. I don't.
Are there...
I haven't heard of that. Anywhere in town, I haven't heard of any controls in place or any regulation of such a thing.
So we can't again...
He still, again, when I go back to, it's an R zone. Still has to comply with the parameters of the residential, the R's, the O's. So if you open up a business, an agribusiness or something of that nature, you'd have to follow through. Off the top of my head, I'd say, how to get the planning board action, okay? Is there going to be a site plan involved? In there, how to get people, ingress, egress, site plans, lighting, the whole. From what I've heard from the applicant, it does not sound like that's his intention, okay? Like if it morphed into something of that nature, that's what would have to happen. Or that's the path that he would go to comply.
Right. And I'm not discouraging him, I'm just saying...
He would probably be backing for you guys as well.
Right. And probably the planning board for a special use permit. But once again, tonight, we're here for all the area variances specific to the asking. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just, just to answer your question, that is not my intention. Ever.
Right, but...
No, I understand. It might not be me, it might be somebody else.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing.
Just, just not my intention.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would even go to a commercial business, even if it wasn't him. The next one, it's still restricted in that part. And the GI zone, just because it's split, doesn't migrate over into the R zone without a rezone from the town board. And I'm not saying that's happening. I'm just saying that would be an action that would be done, need to be done. All right. So I'd like to leave it with that one condition of approval. Still asking for a motion.
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 Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, or wait, board vote. Jim, for A.
Sorry, are you voting already?
Yes.
What's that?
Let you have a question.
Yes. Mark?
Is that yes, you have a question, or yes, you voted?
Yes, I'm voting.
Yes.
Mike?
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes. So we're all set on the square footage. Now, letter B is the height of the proposed structure to be 20 feet, 0 inches with 12 feet, 0 inches is allowed. Ask for a motion to adopt the application.
Motion.
All right, thank you. Second, board vote. Actually, no, we have to have a second.
A second. A second.
All right. Board vote.
You going to ask me, or?
Yeah, I'm going to go down the line. Jim?
Yes.
Thank you. Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes. All right. Letter C is located in the front yard where it's not permitted. Ask for a motion to adopt the application. Is there a second?
Second.
Board vote, Jim?
Uh, yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes. And letter D, housing of livestock under shoot from the property. To be clear, that's the south property line of the flag lot, or the flag portion of the lot. Ask for motion to adopt this application. No moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Board vote, Jim?
No.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
No.
I vote yes. So you're all set on that, sir? Good night. Keep working with Paul and Billy Carter.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right. You guys, we're going to have an hour-long video training.